You all set?
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Thank you for joining us today. I appreciate it. It is 1:01 and this is a special meeting of the ESINet user group specifically to discuss the Vail and Pittkin routing and phone system. So I see we have quite a few people here, which is good. I did not create an agenda for this because we only really have one topic. However, I know that, as I've said before, that there is a lot of passion behind a lot of people here for 911. There's also a lot of frustration that has built up. But my idea of this meeting is to move forward and find a resolution, if we can, to what is happening with Pittkin and Vail whenever they have a quote-unquote outage. And outages defined differently by different people in this meeting. I understand that. That's just what I'm going to call it for me at for this meeting. So I know that Brett and Jeremy are on. So what I would like to do is open up the conversation and start with them since it's pretty much Pittkin who is having most of this issue. So Brett, if you or Jeremy want to go first and just like give a overview of what is going on, what has been done, just so that everybody's on the same page. And I think that'll be good to start off this meeting.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Kathy. I'll let Jeremy talk about when we start getting into the really technical stuff. But you know, just overall, hopefully, everybody kind of got to read that overview email I sent out yesterday. Again, I'm not, I have no desire to rehash or figure out who's to blame. I just want to learn from this, move forward. Like you said, we need a resolution. I think that we are close to a resolution. We were waiting on Motorola's piece. They've made some very good concessions, both financially and with their their architecture that will allow us to move into standalone status between us and Vail and just stop trying to make the design work and still provide us with having our calls received here in Aspen for Pittkin County. It was determined that there's just no way possible with the way it was designed and originally set up for it to work the way that we wanted to have our calls delivered here and avoid these outages that have caused our citizens and Mark Center especially much headache and delay over the last three years. I think the bottom line that I keep going back to is, you know, we're coming up in two months will be in October 24 and all this came to light and was requested by us in October of 21. And we've had zero changes, zero movement. Nothing has been done to fix it. We're still in the exact same position we were at that time. That said, I'm hopeful that we'll get this done. And I appreciate the work that these three companies and the people that worked with them have done over the last nine months to get us here. But we're still not there yet. And with the track record, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to believe it till I see it. But more importantly, I want to talk about the way this ESINet has come together and been built by CenturyLink and Entrado and the shortcomings that we may not feel now, but a lot of the reasons that we couldn't make it work here are going to start to affect all of the PSAPs across the state as we start adding things to the ESINet and start adding some of the technologies that frankly, we were promised. So if anybody has any questions about just kind of the history and overview, I'm happy to take those now. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Jeremy for some of that more technical piece. All right, Jeremy, you're on.
Sorry, I couldn't get myself off a mute. It's this technology stuff. I'm going to share my screen here real quick, just to kind of lay out a diagram so people can kind of see our configuration and setup. I pulled this from actually a document that was actually provided to the ESINet user group from Entrado when we went live. It's based off of their ESINet IP interfaces. So let me share that real quick out. Let me know if you guys can see my screen. So this document was provided by West in the initial phases to the ESINet user group based off of PSAP options and everything else. But it had some good pictures in here amongst everything else to kind of show some of the configurations of what that looks like. And I thought that that might be useful, you know, based off of. So in this setup configuration right here is potentially the majority of your guys' PSAPs. You got an ESINet connection, two routers in, and it goes to CPE equipment. Couple of things to note, router border control function and that. We are set up in a geodiverse solution between Vail. So this is really our setup right here, right now. So PSAP one would be Vail, PSAP two would be Pittkin County, two ESINet routers and Vail, two ESINet routers in Pittkin County. Again, border control function. What's happening in our call delivery to kind of just continue high level here is our calls are being delivered to the two ESINet routers in Vail. They then route to Pittkin County across a local MO connection. We've had two MO connections with Lumen, CenturyLink in the past. We've tried diversifying those connections to keep some stability. But all of our emergency services routing is being done on a local non-emergent network. And so as you guys spoke today in the earlier conversation about outages for admin and stuff like that, when this goes down, we don't have 911 in our community. And there's no way for it to fail over to these additional routers under the current configuration. And that's one of the things that we've really struggled with in this. We can't separate these two facilities and get 911 calls between us. And so that has been part of that problem. Again, we had Labor Day weekend. We were down the entire weekend and I could not get a hold of anybody that had any emergency services priority within CenturyLink to help us out and get this service going. It wasn't until normal business hours after a holiday weekend that we were able to get this online again. So it was 40 plus hours at that point in time without 911 services. But a part of this drawing that I think, and to get a little technical, but not too overly technical in this, a part of this drawing that I think stands out is these border control router functions. This truly doesn't exist as we know it in the I3 documentation community in the sense of what we're looking for between the border control functions, session border controls, the routing capability functions and all of that. The majority of what we've seen in this, in this conversations we've had between Motorola and Entrado and in this process has been this firewall that you may have in place between your equipment and that ESINet router is simply just doing a next hop route, meaning it's pointing from this ESINet router to your CPE equipment. And so that transaction is happening on your CPE equipment. And thus, you're losing some of the, what we would look to with routing functions, which is what Brett had spoke to in, and potentially the future. We've had talks on the Western Slope over the years of if we lost a major center like a Wesco or Grand Junction or something like that, how do we diversify calls to other centers without doing just simply a make-busy failover process, you know, without having to physically throw a switch? How do we make that happen? And so we looked at, you know, if you looked at the I3 document for routing protocols, you want to be able to say, I've got four people sitting at this position or this PSAP and six people sitting here. If I get seven calls coming into one, I want it to route to the other. And I want those other three calls. And that's based off of the conversations we've had in that I3 document design. But without this function here, that's been our biggest problem. And so we just don't have the network infrastructure on the phone system side between that and the ESINet side to do that, that we'll call it smart routing, but layered routing, layer three, layer seven based routing that allows us to route that traffic appropriately and apply those policies and apply the different technologies that would be used to do that. And so our, our crux of this has been we're stuck just based off of these two routers feeding into Vail and then utilizing that CPE equipment to pass it across our network because we just don't simply have the equipment and routing in place to get there. There's no way outside of me make-busying one site to force it to the other. Because when this goes down, this system does not detect and these routers do not detect that they're down. They just attempt to deliver to Vail. And so we have to actually make busy on our side to tell it, hey, by the way, it's not there and, and, you know, force them into actually failing over to a route to Vail. So that was a lot. Any questions on any of that so far?
Sorry, Jeremy, I'll just add one thing. If you look at that top bullet point, Entrado's own literature says local network is generally only used in rerouting during a failure scenario of the entire site. So that obviously was not followed when this was built.
Yeah. And so that's been our crux of this. And so we've gone round and round with Motorola and Entrado. And it's not pointing fingers. There's no bad guys in this scenario, trying to come up with solutions. But there's just been a differences opinion about the local hardware and routing policies based off of I3 documentation and what would be at the PSAP for allowing that failover routing and allowing that local routing and border control functions and everything else. And so without that, you know, we just can't make that, this situation work. And Motorola engineering has struggled to try to make that work. We've looked at adding routing equipment internally on the CPE side, upgrading our network switches. We've, we've had multiple conversations on how do we get this to work? Because this was working in the camera trunk environment. We had the same setup, but outside of the ESINet, we had gateways for camera trunks that would go into it. And we would fail over based off of routing and that. If CPE equipment here failed, we could pass traffic across, but it was working in that same, this same type of scenario. And so it wasn't until we went live on ESINet that we found out that there were conversations between Entrado, Motorola, Lumen and such to design this network that says that basically primary will always go here. It will never fail to these routers unless one of these routers or both of these routers fail, and then it will fail to Pittkin County's router. Caveat to that is a year ago, we found out that this router here has been down for the last year. That's why I asked about it at the last, you know, ESINet user meeting.
Jeremy?
Yes?
Just to let you know, if you're pointing, we can't see the
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you guys could. So on the bottom sites, Site 2 Router B has had a PDA failure for the last year. And I went back through my emails on that. And we had a problem when we were trying to work through some separation of this because we have continued to ask for them to deliver our calls to Pittkin County, to our routers. And we found out that that Router B wasn't working. We were told it was fixed, but just two months ago, we had a tech show up that said, hey, yeah, that's still down. And it's been down that entire time. And so we have not actually received calls across our Pittkin County routers or ESINet routers of any substance outside of testing since we've been live. To kind of add to that, and we found this out as well, we're not capturing on ECATs on our side. That is all being handled by Vail's side based off of this delivery and this process. So anyway, that's just kind of the little history, the overview. Hopefully, that makes sense to everybody. Please, if there's questions on it. That's kind of where we're at with this. And so Motorola and our solution is simply to break these sites out altogether and just do complete standalone PSAPs similar to that, you know, primary, whatever that we had here initially.
Hey, Jeremy, this is Cody over in Garfield. Your exact design was how they originally proposed when you were back with Junction, how we would be set up. And my understanding at the time was that it was supposed to split the SIP trunks between each PSAP. So, you know, in our case, we have six trunks and it was supposed to split three in Junction and three here. And then it would still be routing calls over that local network. And me and you both said, we don't want to do that because we only had that one connection. We didn't want to route 911 calls over it. And then that's when we ultimately decided to go to the standalone ESINet setup on both ends.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a similar conversation from there. Kimberly?
I guess my question is a little bit more towards CenturyLink and the CenturyLink team. I'm just curious, from CenturyLink's perspective, why did CenturyLink change the demarcation for the 911 call handoff to your PSAPs? And then my second question for CenturyLink is, the ESINet routers, my understanding is that they're being monitored. And if one's been down and has been down and wasn't resolved, I'm curious as to why that wasn't monitored. And are they being monitored now?
This is Rich Johnston. I can address the first question. I'm not sure where Lumen is with looking in the router down question that you had. So the first question is, why was it changed? So back when it was deployed and there was a camera gateway locally at the site, in that case, it's more of a static route. So we see two routes, two, in essence, one endpoint for Vail, one for Pittkin County. It's statically routed. So in that case, we can route calls destined for Vail to Vail and destined for Pittkin to Pittkin. When we went and moved forward with our standard Motorola deployment, which is a standard multi-node Motorola deployment, then it changes. This BGP is used. The circuit that is of best quality is typically used, is monitored within our infrastructure and used. So that could be one of any of the four circuits, whatever is most available and has a high MOS score. So in that case, we go from more of a static route to a BGP route, which means we could go over any of the four links to either PSAP. And typically, that's controlled again by the the health of the particular circuits that are in play.
Rich, you're speaking specifically to when we upgraded these sites. They upgraded their call handling equipment and switched to SIP from, yeah.
Well, this one from, go ahead. I was going to say, we were on our call handling equipment for a period of time before we went live on this. But I think there's a note of contention in that comment, Rich, that that would be theoretic for one PSAP with a multi-site scenario sharing that situation. But that conversation was never had with the PSAP in a scenario where it's two PSAPs in a geodiverse solution like that. Because at no point would those PSAPs have agreed, or we would have agreed in this process to that separation and breaking that static routing process and call delivery because it simply does not speak to our operational functions in need in that process. And so that was done outside of the PSAP's knowledge. You looked at it from a geodiverse solution with a Motorola product, not based off of a geoverse solution with two PSAPs sharing those equipment. And I think that's a point that we need to make sure is clarified in this.
Okay. And to be honest, Jeremy, I wasn't around three years ago, so I don't know the exact conversations that were had. I'll take your word for it there, that it wasn't communicated properly. But I can't confirm or deny that. But I believe you. I think what's important to note that what we've done and coordinated with over the last nine months is we identified that and Lumen and Entrado worked to reset up or talk about reconfiguring the infrastructure to do static-based routing so that we would, you know, in essence, force the calls for Vail to Vail and force the calls to Pittkin to Pittkin. So there was a solution laid out for that. But then down the line, and again, I want, I want people to agree or disagree or call me out if they believe I'm wrong. Down the line, there's a point is, once the call goes out or the invite messaging call goes out to the CPE infrastructure, there's a re-invite from that CPE infrastructure. And at that point, I think that's when what you were referring to is the BCF kind of feature functionality to re-point that down the proper route, that couldn't be figured out with the existing solution. So we did get there. I agree that the timing on it, it seems way too long, but we were able to get back to a point where Entrado and Lumen were able to work a solution that we could change it back into static routing, disregard the BGP and get it to the physical location we needed to get it to. But then we found some additional issues with the return.
Yeah, we simply just didn't have that router border control at the PSAP that would allow us to normalize those sessions, do IBGP routing, you know, internally to say, forcing that call if it's coming in on Pittkin County side to Pittkin County's equipment, the session could be delivered there. But there was not the equipment to tell it how to get back to that session on the Entrado side because we simply don't have that function as you're talking directly with our telephony server and not that border control router function. There's not that middle hardware piece in there to be traffic cop, for lack of a better term, to tell it to get from point A to point B. And this is the route to get there for this session with these IDs. You're going to go here and Vail's going to go here. And so that's kind of where it ended up. That's fairly high level. I apologize. But that's kind of what the struggle we've had in this process.
And if we want, if we want to talk more, I saw Brett's email go out yesterday about commitments Entrado and Lumen have made surrounding the functions of the ESINet and I3 capabilities or PRF capabilities or alternate routing or volume distribution. I'd love to have those conversations too today if we can, and definitely set up additional meetings and trainings on what the capabilities of the Lumen and Entrado architecture is. Because there are a lot and they're not all being used. And I, there must be some confusion because there's definitely some next gen applications in there that, that are way beyond that of the legacy infrastructure. But one of those, one of those questions being the BCF specifically, you know, Entrado does provide a BCF from an ESINet core perspective. So we have that border control function, redundant diverse border control within our infrastructure, and we extend that function out to the routers for our ESINet traffic. But
And that's been our, our conversation is that you have that for the entry and you extend that to the routers for communication and pathway from point of entry into the network to the PSAP itself. We're just missing the component on the PSAP level to manage the internal network on the PSAP side and point of entry into that ESINet side. But Kimberly, you had your hand up as well?
I did. But I don't want to interrupt. I just wanted to add, Rich, I do think it's critical that we talk through what is available today and make sure that the 911 community understands what is available. So we have a, the documentation is lacking in some of those areas. So the conversation would really help fill that gap.
Absolutely. And I think Jennifer Kirkland and I, we had multiple meetings with different regions of the state talking about alternate abandonment routing, just generally of how they're currently set up today, but expanding that to what the capabilities are and drilling down. Are there additional things? There are additional things that we can do. Does it make sense? Does it not? So I think we would continue those conversations. And additionally with that, right? There's a, there are, there is PRF with our existing solution. We can do certain things. More things come definitely with I3 and GIS routing, which we're working to get on the tariff. So not only are there additional features and functions we're not using today, but there will be additional features and functions and alternate default routing capabilities once we get to, once we get that stuff on the tariff. So there's a whole, yeah, it's, we can do more than what we're doing now.
Yeah, Rich, and I was going to add that too. It's this, this is not an I3, fully I3 solution, right? It's an interim RSIA spec. So you don't see some of the features in this that you would, you see in the full I3 spec.
I would ask, and I guess to that point, I think we can definitely call it an ESINet, but we've got to quit putting the I3 standard behind some of this. I think we're on approach to an I3 network, but we're missing some core components here that make it an I3 network that, like myself, lead me to think that we're going to be able to do some of these functions or have some of this equipment at our site that would allow us to get through this situation that we just simply don't have. But we continue to mix those conversations. We're in ESINet in the fact, and I think Darryl had a document on the ESINet user group where he did some explanations on it. We're in ESINet in the sense that we're delivering by IP. But that's truly, we've got some routing capabilities in there, but that's truly the extent of what this network is doing currently. And so, but we keep confusing by mixing them, you know, mixing them.
Right. And I do think, Jeremy, I went and re-looked at the tariff this morning. And it's in line with what we're doing, what is documented there. But I do think it would be better maybe to keep I3 out of it totally or say it's an I3 capable infrastructure, right? That, that we've laid the foundation because we do have this in other areas where we're fully I3, doing fully I3 protocols and TRF and GIS routing and LIST and ADR and all the good things. It's the same infrastructure. It's just not been, what's the right word, activated or enabled for the state of Colorado yet. It's not on the tariff yet. But there are, again, I don't want to say everything waits until that gets done. There's, there's a lot of things we can do around alternate default routing, around giving the PSAP their own capabilities to control this stuff. I was going through it today and there's, you know, through our customer management portal, there's ways that you can activate abandonment routing, you can reprioritize routes. There's a whole bunch of things that are available today, as well as load sharing and volume distribution that are all available today. So we just need to go through. And where the information came from, again, I'm sure that is what was believed at the time. But I'd like to really set this stage back up and say, this is what we can do and who wants to make the changes? And let's go. Because we want to make this as good as we can make it for everybody.
I appreciate that. Matt, you got your hand up?
Yeah. This is a tough situation, for sure. As I think back over the run-up to and the migration to ESINet service, there is a section heading in the tariff that calls it NG911 and ESINet. But I honestly don't know that I've ever heard what we have now through that entire process is being referred to as I3. I've always understood it to be our I2 interim, RFAI, and sort of had expectations that if we want to put it in more gross terms, it's E911 over an MPLS network, right? So if somebody has been calling it I3, I think that's very unfortunate. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that I believe volume-based alternate routing to multiple PSAPs has been available for about a year. Is that right, Rich?
That sounds right to me, the timing, yeah.
Okay. I think we talked about it at the task force for the ESINet user group sometime in the last 12 months or so.
Yeah, I think it was on two releases ago for that particular piece. But again, this reprioritization and again, things under the PSAP's direct control with, with the proper authority and risk management and sign-off. And I'll show you this during our next presentation when we talk about it. You can go in, you can establish 10 alternate routes and go in, click and reprioritize those real time. So there is, there is a level of control by the PSAP. And again, once we get in, once we do cross that barrier from next gen or IP selective routing to GIS and I3, a whole new door opens with GIS routing and additional policy routing functions like based on time of day and, and special events based on special layers, based on call types. All of that becomes available in this next iteration.
Jennifer, go ahead.
Thanks. And I just wanted to clarify, even in our state of 911 reports, we've been talking about the fact that we are not in a full, you know, I3 next gen 911 and the steps that need to be taken to get to full, you know, I3 next gen 911. So I don't know that we've been So I don't know that we've been and collectively talking as a nine one one community about the fact that we're an I three standard or an I, an I three state because we're not, and I don't think we've been saying that we have been.
No, that's been conversations just locally in, in, in this process is where some of those have come out and, and how do we get to some of these functions? Because again, looking at this, you know, we're separating out a phone system and in, in the solution. Based off of some of those technologies that we feel kind of missing. Um, and it's forcing us now to separate these out, which probably should have been done before we went live on an E S I net, but you know, we're three years into that conversation and and those terms are still kind of being tossed around. And so I'm glad that there's clarity in, in the, as in a group and then within the state, I think we just need to keep some consistency in those conversations to make sure that we're not confusing the two.
Jeremy, can I ask you, uh, your opinion on some things? And I saw this Brett from, from your email too.
Okay. So nobody asks me that. Just a heads up. Everybody else in the state can attest to. Just kidding.
Um, so the, the B C F was brought up a couple of times and the, the feature functionality of having one local to the P S A P. So it's, it's been our deployments, not only in Colorado, but across the world, across the country that, that methodology that we do have a B C F from an E S I net perspective to protect ourselves and protect our, our customers that are on the network. But anything local, any piece of equipment local, we have said is usually the responsibility of that P S A P. And the reason being um, is because there, once that B C F is in place, it's not only going to be handling E S I net traffic, right? I mean, from my perspective, it's going to be handling a whole bunch of possibly different types of routing, whether it's that internal piece up to P S A P routing, if it's I P VoIP admin lines coming in, if it's internet connections. I know, I know that, I know that Entrado out there now, when they sell their next generation Viper, they're including B C Fs as part of that call handling side equation, but I'll get to my question here. Is it your stance that the E S I net side should be providing onsite border control functions for each P S A P? Cause I've kind of, that's what I thought it was hinting towards, but I wasn't sure.
No, I feel like that the, that would be something we would work out with our local telephony provider, you know, phone provider. Um, I think that having the capabilities of doing that, uh, as you spoke to, you know, the different connection types and that. Now, border control is not just the security side of it. It's normalization of those networks and SIP sessions as they come into that P S A P. Uh, allows for policy-based routing at the P S A P level uh, of how it wants to distribute those calls. Like in this scenario uh, with between Vale and Pitkin County, we could do it based off of uh, seats signed in, you know, if Mark has four people signed in and we have seven for some reason. Well, if he gets 10 calls because Vale pass blew up, we want to be able to route those accordingly, uh, similar to what we would do in an old camera trunk environment uh, in this solution. And so there's just a lot of things in that I three document that we would look to, to be able to, to handle some of this. As well as our partnerships within our neighbors, uh, uh, of routing and in that type of thing from there as well. And so I think to uh, primary P S A P, secondary P S A P solution, uh, scenario where you could pass that routing off based off of that call distribution, uh, simply based off of border control. Um, and I, I think it's promising that we have that on the Entrado side. Uh, I think that's great that we're getting there and in that implementation. Uh, so to hear that, that's, you know, we're, we're on our way. Uh, but that to me is the, the stance of that is, is being able to normalize that traffic based off of the needs of the P S A P at that local level from a border control and, and the egress of, of information that we want to monitor and bring into our centers. Not based off of what Entrado's offering in a tariff or, or Lumen's offering in a tariff and providing as a service. And so that's the part that's disconnected right now is I can't do those things without going through Entrado Lumen's process uh, of that. And so by having that functionality local at the P S A P, I can now ingest your information and bring in other information and distribute that locally at the P S A P how we want to.
Makes, makes perfect sense to me, Jeremy. Thank you. I, I mean, just as a side note to, um, you know, we are doing from a policy routing function from a special event, P S A P queue perspective, we are, we continue to upgrade our systems with with additional capability there. But again, you know, when we send out a call, unless we get a busy or an error, that's a, you know, that's a completed call. And what you described is a next step of that for, for, for P S apps to be able to make their own choice and redirect traffic locally to P S A P. So it, it's a good combination effort, I think.
No, I don't disagree with that. And it's promising, like I said, to hear that you guys have taken those steps and that, that those options are out there. Knowing that it's not truly an I three yet, and I get that, you know, I don't know a lot of places that have fully functioning in this environment uh, per that document. Uh, we've got, you know, uh, geo-based routing, we've got some of these other things, but there's still a lot of conceptuals out there that just have to be proven out. So our expectation isn't like, hey, bring us this equipment and turn it on. Uh, but I felt like that equipment would have helped us in this situation by being able to do those functions in this situation. We could have made this work without forcing our phone provider to, hey, separate out this phone system now three years after this problem and, and come up with a creative solution to make this work, you know, which is the environment that we're in right now.
Yep. Makes sense.
Thanks, Jeremy and Rich. Appreciate that. Um, Jackie just raised her hand. Go ahead, Jackie.
Well, yeah, I, I remember in the tariff conversations, what we talked about a lot was not losing any capability that we previously had. And it sounds like, um, Pitkin and Eagle have definitely lost capability that they previously had with this move to the E S I net. And so I'm curious as to, you know, I know it's been three years. Um, one of the things I'm curious about is perhaps a more stringent process. And maybe Jennifer, you can help with a formal written complaint to the P U C or something along that nature. And I realize you're working it out and that kind of thing. But to say that it, it doesn't work that way versus when all our conversations through the tariff agreement was that we would not lose any functionality. And maybe I'm remembering that incorrectly, but that's what I really had in my head.
Well, I'll say this from a Lumen Entrado perspective, Jackie, and then we can talk about the formal complaint. I, a couple of things on our side, I think we need we can, and Cindy, you're closer to this than I am, but we need a more formal acceptance process that this is what we did, this is how it works and, and everyone agrees to it. That, that would cause, it sounds like not all of that happened, or maybe it didn't three years ago. Um, so I, I think that's a piece part of it. The second thing I wanted to say was it was as conceptualized, and I will say that rather than as deployed, but as conceptualized, we weren't losing any feature functionality. We were actually gaining feature functionality with additional redundancies through both sides. So again, there's some confusion there, but it was never the intent or going into it thinking that we were losing something. It was always that we were gaining something. So again, there was confusion and misunderstanding of that, but it wasn't intentionally done that way.
Correct. And this change occurred what roughly a year after uh, we implemented these two P S apps on the E S I net and there was a switch from the camera trunks to direct trunking that changed the architecture of these two sites. Uh, I believe it was still the intention to maintain that functionality, but again, the the way this network interacted with the call handling equipment at the time. And still today, we're not getting the responses back. We need to enable this functionality the way it was in the camera world. Which is why we've moved to this proposal separating the two sites to be completely standalone. Um, as the kind of next option. The first option would be to um, work out that messaging, but we've, we've spent two, three years trying to get those um, messaging codes that would cause the E S I net to um, do this. And that obviously has not worked. Um, so the interest of, again, stopping the pain that Pitkin is experiencing. Um, we, we've got full racks at both sites. Um, so separating them um, makes sense. It does uh, change for some of that failover scenario, but the sites would could still fail over to each other in an alternate or busy scenario. Um, and I believe they're still configured to do that today.
Cindy, can you say more about the change that was implemented a year after?
They, they upgraded their call handling equipment and went from camera trunk to direct SIP, right? And a number of P S apps did that upgrade um, from Kama to SIP after we did the initial implementation.
Jennifer, that was based off of the solution at Vesta or uh, Vale and Pitkin County were still using the old Patriot solution, which had to have those interface devices uh, that went from Kama to I P initially. And then Vesta and Vale uh, upgraded their C P E to the, our Vale and Pitkin upgraded to the Vesta on their C P E equipment that allowed us to go true I P at that point. Uh, Mark had gone live with that, um, and Vale probably six months before uh, Pitkin County did. We did not figure out on the routing scenario until Pitkin County made that transition uh, to I P. That's when we found out that the routing was not accurate for us.
Thank you both.
Yeah. And that's when we fe- figured out working with Motorola and the P S apps that we weren't getting um, certain codes back to force those failovers. Um, or re-invites, I think, as Rich described them. Um, they just weren't coming through and we were never able to resolve that issue. So essentially from an E S I net perspective, it looks like the call is delivered and answered to Vale. And from that point, the E S I net has handed the call off and it has no more visibility into what happens to that call.
Yeah, it's because of that deliveries to that Vale router. And so it's delivered to that Vale router. It never makes it to Pitkin County and it's never seen in Pitkin County.
Right. And the E S I net doesn't see it. It sees it as an answered call.
Well, and it's, it sees it as delivered call. Because in the call handling equipment, if it can't deliver to Pitkin County, it goes nowhere. And so we have to physically still make that make busy switch on our side to tell it, hey, by the way, we're not getting these calls and fail it over through a make busy for Vale to actually get that delivered.
And our, we were expecting a re-invite when that scenario would occur. To come back to the E S I net, to have the E S I net redirect the call down the other links. And that's the piece that's broken and not working.
Yeah, it's
Move to this solution to separate the sites completely.
Yeah, it's not getting delivered to our side to allow that process to happen. So it wouldn't see it as down because it doesn't see it on our site. So, but yes, the, the end-all goal of this and the end-all result of all of this is we're going to have to get our own phone solution. We're going to deliver Mark, uh, the half of the, the, the phone solution we currently have into Vale, drive that up to Vale and send up a new phone solution with Motorola in Pitkin County. That's the only way we can get into a situation where we can get our calls delivered consistently and truly see outages when they go down.
All right. Cody's had his hand up for a little bit.
Uh, and Cynthia maybe kind of answered my question, but Jeremy, why, why can't you guys just split apart like you were discussing and kind of emulate what you had with the camera trunks?
It doesn't allow it based off of the way those E S I net routers are being delivered. Um, we cannot get those calls delivered per session to Pitkin County's router under that current E S I net network architecture. Um, it, it, there's, we can get them delivered. I shouldn't say that. We can get them delivered, but without that routing border control function at our side of the house, the call will make the router, but the telephony equipment now has four choices to deliver that call back to the E S I net. And so you have to static route those based off of policy-based routing uh, to get that to say Pitkin County's calls come in on Pitkin County's routers and we deliver them back out on Pitkin County's routers and Vale unveil. Uh, but the way that this solution is set up on that routing side of the house, it sees four points of entry and four points of exit. And so there isn't the consistency in that handoff where those E S I net routers are, are assigned the SIP session to those agencies specifically. And so with that delivery, it's, it's pointing those pathways back because we just don't have that border control, policy-based routing at the P S A P that would tell it to send it back out.
But if, but if you're a standalone, if both P S apps are considered standalone, then you, you know, your two routers would get your calls and their two routers would get their calls.
Correct, correct. And that's the solution we're having to go to is, is separate out the P S apps themselves, build Pitkin out, new phone system and go standalone. And that's the direction that uh, we're, we're moving towards.
I think, is that a limitation of the Motorola Vesta system? Cause I mean, it, it, and on, in the Entrado system that we have, you know, being multi-node with Grand Junction, uh, we're still a full functioning multi-node, but we're still considered on the E S I net side as two independent P S apps.
I won't say it's a limitation of Motorola. Sorry, Jeff, your hand up. I won't say it's a limitation of Motorola per se. Uh, but it is definitely a difference between the Viper solution and the Motorola solution. You're on a secondary subnet and then Grand Junction is on their side. So your network is separated by a subnet uh, with the communication between the two servers during replication. Um, by doing that, that allows you to actually do that delivery. But being that the Vesta solution is one common subnet or network between both sites, uh, it, it makes it problematic in that routing process without the internal equipment.
Okay.
Jeff, go ahead.
Hey Kathy, thank you. Um, just um, to kind of give you a kind of an overview from a high level. You know, when we um, originally put the Vesta system in at Vale and at Pitkin, um, you know, it was prior to the E S I net deployment, um, when the E S I net got deployed, that network in between the two P S A P hosts, host A and host B. Um, like was mentioned earlier, there were two Mo circuits from Lumen that were utilized um, for the transmission of the calls between the two sites. Um, you know, in conversation with multiple people, um, you know, first of all, the, the most circuits were for the most part in the same um, same trough. And so when that trough went down, it took both circuits down. And we always like to see uh, um, independent circuits in a scenario where geodiverse system is utilized. One that maybe is a Mo circuit and the other one that is potentially um, what's being utilized now, which is the Thor circuit, which is a, a fiber circuit that finally got into, into Pitkin. Um, Vale seemed to have had that capability for quite some time, but just recently Thor was brought into Aspen. So that helped diversify those circuits between the two P S apps. Now, just be, I think because we go down between Glenwood Canyon, there's a lot of instances where there's a great possibility that that Thor circuit and the Mo circuits can both go down simultaneously. So, um, we, even though we've, we've diversified those paths, I think we've done, uh, you know, although it took quite a while to get that done. Um, I think the two Mo circuits, when they both went down, caused a lot of issues and a lot of downtime over at the Pitkin uh, dispatch center. Now with that diversified, I think it's, it's gotten much better. Um, hopefully Jer- Jeremy, that piece that you mentioned about uh, things went down over the Labor Day weekend, um, was that because both circuits went down again? Between the two sites?
Actually, in our experience on that one was one of the circuits had stayed up, um, but what had happened was there was a core router failure and I believe it was Century Link, one of their C E Os, which went on us and Vale. And that core router failure had both sides of the circuits. And so it created actually a worst case scenario there is we call it the Mo flapping where the phone systems can see each other, but they can't actually pass traffic across it. And so one went down, the other one could send a heartbeat across, so it would never actually fail. And so even with a make busy, we couldn't handle our admin calls or anything else because uh, I call it the Nemo scenario, the seagulls from Nemo. The phone servers couldn't figure out what they had, so they're both saying mine trying to answer and it's going from this hot standby, standby, hot standby, standby scenario, uh, and, and creating just this massive mess. Um, and, and that's just simply based off of that architecture in the Mo network and how those communicate across. By going to a Thor, at least it's relieved those issues, um, in the sense that, you know, the chances of both being dug up, I mean, there's still that capability. I'm sure at some point pathway, uh, they do share some ground, but uh, it's alleviated that to the hardware failures that we had experienced, which is what's caused our Mo network. Uh, very seldom have we had a trench dug up as much as we've had hardware failures at the Century Link routing equipment side.
Yeah. And, and I remember, and I've been always optimistic about getting to a solution that did not involve breaking the two dispatch centers apart and making them single back rooms or standalone P S apps. So I really, I want to say I fought hard to try to, try to get to a point where we So I really, I want to say I fought hard to try to, try to get to a point where we. Could figure out a way to do this without breaking them apart. Well, you know, we, we sat down a little over a year ago. With, you know, four different options. And of those options, you know, one was to, to add an additional network. Or add a different network, which was, I think that was finally put in. Jeremy, didn't you guys put that in in March or April of this year? Somewhere around there?
Sorry, yes, we, we got that turned up in March and April and it had been available to us. Uh, you know, before that, for a couple of months beforehand, it was just simply the timing of getting that going. Ski season, winter, all of that, so.
Yep, and then, um, just recently after, we had some discussions with Entrado back in December and January. And I was optimistic again about maybe, because they said they could make some changes. And we went down this road and we had multiple conversations about it and. And that wasn't going to be a workable su- situation either. Um, I went back to management at Motorola's, um, for Motorola and. Asked them if we could split them apart. We got, uh, uh, initial documentation to split them apart. Um, I presented that to Pitten and to Vale. Um, it wasn't quite what we were looking for. I went back to Motorola management. Um, they agreed and we, um, we decided we, we'd split these apart. At, at no cost to the PSAPs. Um, so that's in the works. I've got a couple of legal pieces. That need to be, um, part of the documentation to both Vale and to Pitten. We should see those either later this week or early next week. Hopefully be, be able to present that to them and get this kicked off to break them apart and make them single back rooms. And get calls that go to Vale, directly to Vale. And calls dedicated to go to Pitten, directly to Pitten. So that's our goal. I think we're, we're on the right footing. I think, um. If all goes well, we should have this done hopefully, um, in the very near future.
Thanks, Jeff. Brett, you've had your hand up for a bit. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Um, and thanks to everybody. Um. Just talking about those Mo circuits, um, leads me back to the conversation this morning. Um, most of the time, I would say, you know, nine out of the 10 times that it went down. Um, I think it's probably more than 10, but we'll call it nine out of 10. Um. It had to do with old infrastructure, an old card, an old circuit. Um, things like that, uh, similar to hearing the word coaxial this morning. Uh, coax cable is, uh, is baffling. Um. So I, I think this kind of speaks to, um, you know, we've got all this great technology and great infrastructure built. In conjunction or alongside, or even integrated with, um. Old failing technology. Um, and that is, you know, it's much bigger conversation, but I think that leads to a crux of it. And then that leads to. Getting service on those, um. Those old circuits and business lines, if you will. Um, and that, that was really the, the crux of, um, the length of the outages that we had. Was we could not get support on those Mo lines. Um, and I know you guys offered up, um, everybody's phone number and we appreciate that, but I can tell you. I called all those numbers, um, every time. And, uh, you know, I, we had Wes on the phone, um, Sunday morning of the. Um, Labor Day outage in '22. And, uh, we still got nothing fixed until Tuesday. Um. And, uh, the suggestion of, you know, joining the, the upgraded, uh. Physician or service, whatever it is on the business lines, well, that doesn't really help. It, it gives you a little less wait time, um, a little more priority, uh, but. You still get nothing fixed until business hours. Um, so I, that's kind of what I, I want to take away from this is, um, we need those adjunct systems. Um, that our 911 calls rely on. Uh, whether it's even non-emergency calls on admin lines. Anything, uh, like Jeremy said before, uh. That dispatch has to touch or deal with or call on, um, should be. Administered and maintained as a 911 system.
Yeah, and Brett, I, I don't think you're alone in it because as we. Deployed, you know, Ezinets in Utah and, um, you know, across North America and, and New Mexico now. We've, we're realizing that in situations like this, especially in rural areas. It's very difficult to find one connection, let alone two connections. That are viable connections into a PSAP. Um, I think even in Colorado, in some of the very. Uh, eastern points and even maybe even in the western points. You know, it's, it's, we're, we've got one Ezinet circuit. And that's about all we can get in there at this point. So I understand the, the issues that we're going through and it, and it's getting better. And we're getting more and more companies to, to roll out fiber to these communities. It, it's just taking a lot of time for that to happen, but you're not alone. You're not alone.
Well, it sounds like a solution has been determined and it's just a timeline now. Do we have a timeline set up, um, for Vale and Pitten?
Kathy, I'll answer that. Um, so I've got, the proposal came back from Vesta quotes last week. I had conversations with Pitten, um, with Jennifer, with Vale. Um, about what, how this was, um, going to be rolled out. Um. I sent that up to our legal department. They've got to do their due diligence on this newer contract. Um, and then proper scope of work, it needs to be added to that contract. Um, as soon as those pieces are done and that gets formatted. I will get, deliver that to both Pitten and to Vale. Um, I'm sure we'll walk through it, um, in detail as to how it's going to be rolled out. And then after those contracts are signed. Then, you know, the heavy lifting happens where both Motorola and Lumen and Entrado work together. I know that's not an oxymoron, um, work together to get this. This up and operational and both sites single back rooms at both locations. And, um, it's going to take a concerted effort on both of our parts to make that happen. And they, they both, Lumen, Entrado and Motorola are committed to getting that done.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. Um, you know, I mean, I would, what I would say is the good part about this. Is we have network and routers at each location. It is, it is configuration at that point. It's not ordering, it's not waiting, there's not big timeline. So when that equipment is ready, uh, Entrado absolutely commits to getting that up as soon as possible. Um, again, it's taking one configuration of our system that's configured like a multi-node and changing them to, to standalone. Setting up the alternate routing and doing our, uh, inter-op testing. So we can get that turned around very quickly once that equipment is in place.
Yeah, and again, we confirmed that we have full racks at both sites. There's no additional equipment. From an Ezinet, uh, perspective that needs to be installed, so.
So Kathy, I, I didn't mean to be vague. Um, so once those contracts are reviewed. And once the two PSAPs decide and, and, and approve those contracts. Um, then they will be submitted. We'll have to prepare servers for the Pitten location. Um, and then get engineering staff and field service organization together to get out there. And install the Pitten, the new system over at Pitten. We'll use their existing front room equipment over there. And then we'll grab the B side, uh, that's currently at Pitten and move that to Vale. So a lot of coordination effort needs to take place. But I don't have a true timeline for you at this point until we get through that contract phase, phase. But I've got some, some folks on the management side that know how important this is. And we will be pushing them to get it done as soon as possible.
That sounds good. Thanks so much, Jeff. Um, but from the Ezinet users group, uh, perspective, I'm just going to. Put this down as a standing agenda item, uh, for every month. So I mean, not that we need to know the intricacies, but we just want to follow up and make sure that. Everything is being done that can be done for both Pitten and Vale. Um, so that we can get this taken care of. So we'll be, we, we will have that as an agenda item every month. Until we know that it's taken care of and we don't have these routing issues any longer. And with that said, it sounds like. Go ahead, Brett.
Sorry. Sorry, guys. Uh, real quick, uh, since we got everybody here and feeling good, um. Can we prevent this from happening in the time it takes for this to get done? Uh, we'll CenturyLink commit to designating our Mo circuits as 911. Lines, so we can get service if this happens again in the next month.
Uh, this is Jeff Winkelman. Um, we'll look into see if the, I, I don't know the possibility of actually tagging. Mo circuits as 911. I do know the TSP is an option as far as assisting in the priority restoration. Um, but I don't know that we can actually classify Mo circuits as 911. I don't know, Cindy or anybody else on here?
I was going to agree that, uh, Brett, unfortunately the, the team on this call can't make that commitment to you. But I will, um, bring in the right groups and see what we can do and get back to you. Um, as far as increasing the level of surveillance and restoration on those circuits in the short term.
So then I guess, Carl, I see you have your hand up. Give me just one second. However, if they have that issue that happens with the Mo circuit. They can certainly reach out to the three of you.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Thank you. Carl, go ahead.
And Brett, so you've had, um. 911 trunks or circuits that you've not, you basically have been useless for the last three years?
Correct, that's right.
So hopefully our Lumen will take that into account if they charge you for the TSP or not.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Uh, thanks everyone. Uh, you know, again, sorry for, uh, for adding another meeting here, but, um. We really appreciate you guys, uh, looking into this, um. And, uh, and have these discussions. I, uh, I think, um, I think we got some good stuff out of it. I would say, um, the biggest thing that I got out of it is, uh, there are capabilities, uh, available to us that we're not using in the Ezinet now. And I think, um, having the community at large understand what those are, um. Is, is super important. Um. You know, so number one, we're not complaining about stuff that we, we should be using, um. But also, uh, as we move forward, I guess my question is, as we move forward to these things, we're already seeing, um, piece by piece. Um, additional costs, uh, within this tariff. And, you know, to get us to an I3 going piece by piece like this, how much is this going to cost our community? And Andrew, sorry, go ahead.
No, I appreciate it. You actually kind of beat me to the punch a little bit there. Um, because one of the things that, that I heard in this conversation was that. The, uh, or at least partially, at the very least, some of the difficulty that Vale and Pitten County have been experiencing. Would have been avoided had we had some of the existing I3 capability that CenturyLink says they have in their Ezinet service provision. That is just not built into the tariff. Did I understand that correctly?
Uh, this, this is Rich. I, I, I don't think so. So there are additional rerouting capabilities, there's additional GIS capabilities and I3 delivery protocols. This unique solu- this unique issue where calls are going into, let's just call it a black hole. Wouldn't be resolved with the I3, with any I3 functionality that I'm aware of. There is additional things that, uh, you know, where Brett was talking about in, in the email. Additional features and functionalities and ultimate routing and I3 capabilities. That would all, we, we get more features and functionalities around this, but this particular issue. I don't see how being I3 or not being I3 would have fixed it.
Gotcha. Okay, that's helpful to understand better. So, so then I guess, I guess my question then, um, is a little more academic. But why, why are we spending so much energy arguing back and forth about expensive fiber builds? When we have some of this I3 capability that CenturyLink has. Why can't we start getting that built into the tariff and start working on those projects? Um, to get Colorado moving where it needs to go?
And, and Andrew, from a Lumen perspective, it's in the works. So I can tell you, we're, we're in the middle of it. You know, it's, it's kind of, and Jennifer could talk towards this too, but. There's only so much that can be managed and done per year. But this next year, we are focusing on I3, GIS routing, GIS and, and text. So you're going to, you're going to be hearing a lot more about all of those capabilities soon.
Thanks, Richard.
Yep.
Kimberly, go ahead.
And, and that's all great, but I think it does go back to Brett's comment. And I appreciate Andrew's big picture view of that as well about fiber builds and the cost versus some of the technology doing the heavy lifting for us. For diversity improvements. But again, the costs and only so much now, but these building blocks of layering. Each additional piece on top of this tariff, I think the 911 community really needs to understand. How much we're going to be paying for these services in comparison to perhaps other states. And so that may be something we want to take a look at as. Every additional layer is an expensive cost in the tariff and an added expense to our community.
Sure. I, I agree with you, Kimberly. I mean, I would say absolutely that. The move to this IP select of routing MPLS, MPLS infrastructure was the big lift. Um, but, you know, wh- whenever this was done in 2018, that was the decision to move forward with that and only that at that time. Um, but I think that's, that's part of these ongoing conversations that, that. The PSAPs and the Ezinet users group is having with Lumen is to figure out what, what these next steps. Uh, how the, how they'll financially affect that.
Thanks, Rich. Do we have any other questions? That we can answer in the next 23 minutes? Well, it did give us an hour and a half. Um, but it doesn't look like we're going to need that. Again, I want to thank everybody who is on the call. Um. This is, obviously it's been going on for quite some time. I'm glad that we have a resolution in sight. And hopefully we'll be able to get this taken care of. I'm not even going to give it a timeline, but hopefully we'll be able to get this taken care of. Uh, Jackie, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry. Um, just as general knowledge for all of us, um, because this has taken so long. That, you know, I'd like to hear a little bit about our options. Um, if something is taking. This kind of time because I'm sorry, I just don't feel like it should take three years to find a solution. Um, so I think that if we had, you know, and maybe Jennifer can help us, but. What alternatives, what resources do the PSAPs have to expedite processes if there's these kind of issues?
Kathy, I can speak to some of that if, if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so after this morning's call, uh, our Ezinet users group, uh, Daryl and I were talking about. How we can get some information out to answer your question, Jackie. Um, and we put an agenda item on the task force meeting tomorrow as well. Um, but basically the commission, uh, can only take action on things that it is. Uh, that it is aware of in official proceedings. And so in order for that to come to the commission's awareness and official proceedings, it has to come through the informal or formal complaint. it has to come through the informal or formal complaint process. So Daryl's going to talk a little bit more about that tomorrow in the task force. And then we're going to put together a, um, video, um, tutorial, as well as a one pager guidance on that process and how, um, PSAPs or, um, the ESI net users group or the task force or all three or other, um, groups of interested parties could start that process if they feel that the concerns are not being heard outside of the complaint process.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Apologize. I was going to say, we did attempt to submit through that process within Pitkin County. And we did have conversations with Daryl earlier on, uh, through this process as well. Unfortunately, because of the scenario that we were put in in Pitkin County, uh, based off of how this was implemented, it's not really considered an emergency services outage. And so we've not been able to report, you know, nine plus days or whatever we've had, uh, and, and outages, because it's truly not considered as, as far as the way the tariff is written, that call was delivered to Vale. And so once it hit that, that router, it was delivered. And so we've been back and forth in that process. And unfortunately, we've not had a lot of, of things that we could accomplish or do. And so there's never been a formal process to the PUC or a formal complaint to the PUC, uh, simply based off of that architecture.
Yeah. And you're right, Jeremy. And I think that's a good point to make. I'm sure everybody on this call is aware, but the regulatory, uh, authority that the PUC has is only over the basic emergency services, uh, network and the provider. So things outside of that network are unregulated in Colorado. Uh, and that was done at the state legislature level in 2014. So yes, um, the difficult for your situation, but I think Jackie was speaking more broadly.
Yes, Jennifer, I was. I just was hoping there was information for help. Thank you.
And I just wanted to speak to that. We'd had those conversations. It, it wasn't that we were trying to fight this alone. We'd reached out to Daryl and stuff like that, but it just, we are in such a unique scenario in this scenario or the situation. So.
Yep.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Well, again, I, I, I'm always excited and happy to see this group and a group of these 911 professionals come together in Colorado and work together to try to get things resolved. We're stronger when we work together. Um, and it doesn't matter what side you're on. If you're on the 911 side or the private side, and I want to thank everybody for that. Matt, go ahead.
You know, honestly, this meeting, I think is one of the strongest reasons why the ESI net users group was created. We get, we get things done in the other meetings, but this was good. I'm grateful for the conversation.
Thanks, Matt. I am grateful for the conversation too. And again, I'm grateful for the collaboration. So, uh, with that said, if we don't have anything else, I can go ahead and adjourn this meeting. I'll give it, looks like we're getting a bunch of thumbs up. So I think we are good. It is 2:15. And I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.